First order of business.
Congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
And the first order of business tonight is to approve tonight's agenda.
Make a motion for a term of service.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
So Kerry, to recommend approving the council meeting. Minutes of the April 22nd council meeting. We had a chance to look at them. Any corrections? Get a motion, please, sir.
I'll make that recommendation.
I can second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Post, so Kerry, to recommend approving the April 2025 claims list. Has seen any questions on any of the claims? There was a lot of checks this month. I seem to have the most I've ever signed.
I'll make that recommendation.
I can second that.
Recommendation is second, all in favor.
Aye.
Post, so Kerry, to recommend accepting disbursements, ledgers and financial statements with various funds as of April 30th, 2025.
I'll make that recommendation.
And I will second that.
We have a recommendation and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Post, so Kerry, to recommend approving temporary off-site license for Canley Distillery for August 30th, 2025. I don't know what they got planned, but it might be an outdoor activity, huh?
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a recommendation and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Post, so Kerry, municipal liquor store month in before January.
I hear the dishwasher's in.
The dishwasher's in? It works great. This one?
Yeah. Anything coming up? I mean, council, recommendation. Any issues that we got on hand?
Well, dishwasher's in. We gotta replace the smaller cooler behind the bar, which we discussed earlier. But otherwise, I think we're rolling nice. I hope to have that in before end of June. So, actually, end of May, sorry. That'll be good. Get that second station built and we'll be ready to roll for the busy time. Finished off our cribbage tournaments and now we're just gonna put the cornhole boards out and get into the barbecue cook-off in the Rainier days. Which I'm actually ahead of the game on it.
Inventory and everything good?
Yep.
Gold tabs and all that stuff?
Gold tabs have been great. Berta, I think, can vouch for that, so.
Any questions for Jenny?
No, she's doing good.
Get a motion to approve the recommendation.
Accept a statement.
I'll second that.
We have a recommendation to accept a liquor store statement, all in favor.
Aye.
Post, so Kerry, thank you, Jan.
Thank you.
Nick, maintenance, what do we got going on? We cut down a tree today.
We got lots going on. Mowing season's firing up trees. We had a tree down on 46 after work today that the county come in and helped get rid of. And Minnesota power, it was hung up in a pole on 46. More is getting out, getting rid of those, ready to go. Can we address the parking right now while I'm sitting here? Or wait in line for them?
No, we can't.
Some of the stuff we talked about last year, we had numerous trucks and boats that come in here and park in the summertime. And last year, we have a group of guys that this is the third year in a row they've been here. They park in the grass over here in this little alley. I told them to park there last year because we've had them parking the street out here and then they get yelled at for parking out here and then there's no one. It says no overnight parking in any parking lots anywhere in town. So they were, last year we had a big problem with that group of guys. And they come here and they go to the liquor store and they buy ice and beer and they hang out when they come back. So I tell them park in the grass over here, which is fine, but it's just kind of an ongoing issue. Every year, we have more and more of that now. And they like to use this boat ramp right here. So I'm gonna maybe look into a couple of spots, three, four spots somewhere along here or, you know, I know we have DNR parking lot, which you can get a couple in there. But it seems like it's pretty busy over there. So just maybe this one here to have some, a couple reserved for overnight parking would be kind of nice. Every year we have this now with that boat ramp.
We have some agenda to verify, to get at minimum for a down two overnight spots at a minimum of consecutive seven days. So that there's something there for individuals such that to do, should there need to be, and then it's built into our parking rules already.
Okay.
We have some changes.
Cause I've seen one of the guys is up for opener.
Yep.
And then another thing too, I know we talked about getting a new work truck because of the two-wheel drive one we have is just, it's going. It's, we gotta put oil on it about every two weeks now to keep it running. And this keeps nickel and dimeing us and we got a, we got a quote from Cook at Washke's on everyone. It's identical truck to the one that I drive. Same exact thing, it's got a plow prep package and everything's ready. So if we ever had to get two plow trucks in the future, it would be ready for it. I think Cheryl has the, I didn't bring a bit of news.
Yeah, and we had built it into the budget. So we should purchase a new work truck. And it's about the same purchase what we pay for the one we have now.
Yeah.
How much do we have in the budget for?
I did like the annual payment of like ninety-five hundred a year.
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget though, yeah.
What was the quote from Washke?
Fifty-two?
Fifty-two, I believe, for a brand new.
Six-year payout then.
Yeah.
I know the one last summer, it was down, it was down for quite a while last summer and that was tough with two summer help, Bill and I running off one truck.
Well, I say go for it. Yeah, we'll consider this in, we'll talk to her at the, we'll get a full council, well-known this week at the council meeting and so.
Okay.
Consider it. I mean, things where we have to replace it. So you're gonna get a new one and use our secondary one for, you get a brand new one and then use the other one for Bill? Is that, is that the idea?
I'll keep the one that I have now. Cause that's got the filler paint for the skid steer and it's got, or either or, or I can pick the new one.
Is it new or is it new used? Like, is it a used?
Brand new.
It's a brand new one, yeah.
Brand new. So I mean, I could take, either way, I could take the brand new and put the service tank in that one too.
All right. Well, what else? We'll consider that then, like you said, we got some money put in the budget for Goodwin's.
Yep.
What else you got, Nick?
Sweeper worked great this spring. I put the sweeper on the skid steer, went up and down around and that was a huge help after all the salt and sand and.
About mowing, you got all the words lined up this year?
Yep.
We started mowing today, so.
Yeah, Bill's been, Bill's been mowing two days now, so.
I do have one thing to continue to consideration as we move into a busier tour season. And just cause it's kind of a new department. If we don't get moving on the pier project as quickly as we'd like, I just noticed we've got some open pits down there and I'm just worried for people's kids falling in there. If there's a way we can better partition it off or temporarily fill it in or whatever it is we gotta do if we don't have a pusher timeline. Just to kind of keep that back, our brains coming in is on that.
Yeah, we can run down there with the skid steer too and level it every now and then.
Right.
Yep.
And I know they've got some stuff sticking up, so I don't know if you can just put a barrel over it or something, but.
I see housemen are starting to cut, trying to cut up some of that old, that old, that wood that's been laying there forever. I don't know, just burn it and throw it away. Obviously, it's no good for nothing.
I also talked to him about all the steel lockers and stuff that were laying out there too.
Yeah, we got to get rid of steel lockers. Once they build a new building in front of it, you got the lockers laying down. You know, I've called multiple times and he said, go take care of it. But if you see him, give him a call, say, let's get the locker done.
Yeah.
Some of that other junk, it has its soul.
No, it's been there for years.
It's not a new car lot there or a new junkyard. I can't understand why you wanna keep some of that stuff in front of this building, but. I'd like to see if we can get that cleaned up a little bit. Anything else for Nick? Oh, if you see Hamilton, I'm gonna try to catch him at the process center. We'll look at getting that one panel sawed out and then, you know, what they call a valley gutter.
Yep.
It's on city property and he can't plug the.
The drainage out.
Drainage soon. Okay. Anything else, Nick? Okay, thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Okay, recommend finding the Minnesota Historical Society large grant for the Rainier duty homes.
So, you know, over the past few years, we got this on the National Historic Registry and then we got the Architectural Conditions Assessment, which came back with this big, huge report of things. That, you know, like the plaster in the building and the grating and then the basement and all sorts of various things. I talked to a couple different people about how to go about doing it and they suggested getting more of a general contractor instead of me trying to find people and whatever.
Yeah, you can get Norrison or somebody like, I see Norrison's on here for something, you know.
Yeah, for the same thing. I had to know.
Yeah, they're a paper guy, probably all the way over there.
I had spoken to them about it and they would charge twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars to put the whole package together of estimates and quotes for the grant and help me apply for the grant. I thought that was fairly reasonable, so.
Well, I have no issue with that at all.
And then, so the grant, there's large, large grants, which are over ten thousand dollars, but they can, I've seen some up to, you know, millions of dollars. So, I mean, potentially we could get the, you know, grants for everything we need.
So, yeah, explain that to me, okay. We're gonna bring in a general contractor and he's gonna help us fill up the application and everything. What, what are we looking at? Are we doing the sightings or the outside?
Yeah, the replaster in the building and then the fascia and then all the gutters and then the drainage and the basement leaks.
Everything.
Yeah, kind of, you know.
Total package.
I mean, you know, I mean, it's basically sound except for, you know, a lot of stuff like that.
Okay. Is that a matching grant or is that?
No, it's a, it's a full grant, so. And it's a competitive grant, so, you know, they get it or we make it up. He says he's been through these before with, with big buildings, rehabilitation, so.
Well, usually you have to apply for these things a couple times before you keep on the list, but then that's how you do it.
Yeah.
Spending twenty-seven hundred to get two-hundred-and-seventy dollars, whatever that numbers would be is, is, you're just making a bet and a game here, so.
Right.
Okay, well, I, I went on that one. Get a recommendation on that?
For them to apply for the grant?
Yes.
I'll make the recommendation.
And I can second that.
We got a recommendation and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Post, so Kerry, I guess this is, the next one's the same thing. It's to recommend accepting Norrison Construction's quote in the agreement. That's kind of, I suppose you better recommend that we accept Norrison's quote to do it. Get a recommendation to accept Norrison's quote to.
I'll make the recommendation.
And I can second that.
We got a recommendation, a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Post, so Kerry, the Rainier Dock, we do have a bid on that. We have enough money to do that, so I think we better get that dock under construction.
Yes.
And again, they've kind of ignored you on the.
Dock for trial, I've tested them every single month, yeah.
Okay, what I'd like to do for additional funds, cause we have another dock that needs replacing too. And they said there's money for that. I'm gonna see if I can talk, starber into, that's flood relief, flood relief money and they come in. What were we short, if we were to get done, are we looking for another thirty, fifty thousand?
Like sixty years more.
I think it was another fifty or so, was that?
This one was more like ninety thousand.
Yeah, okay, so, so they were short ninety, about nine, ninety thousand short.
Hundred and ten thousand, so.
Okay, we'll just say a hundred short.
Yeah.
Okay, for flood relief. I'll call. All right.
And I will make that recommendation to accept.
We have the Rainier Dock.
The Innovate 360, Innovate 360, that's called, or is that?
Yeah.
Okay, Innovate 360 to accept their bid for the Rainier B shot. First, let me clarify.
Got a second?
I'll make my second.
We have a recommendation, second, all in favor.
Aye.
Post, so Kerry, recommend approving ordinance 172 parking in Rainier city limits. Does that have something to do with all this overnight parking and everything else? Is that 172? I think after we get the ordinance and you see how it works out, we'll get it. I mean, there's gonna be some hiccups here, but we'll get it figured out. As opposed, okay. So recommending the ordinance, recommendation.
I'll make a recommendation.
And I will second that.
Got a recommendation and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Post, so Kerry, to recommend a new water service for thirty-two ninety-seven that spreads on County Road 20 outside the city limits. And they want to hook up to the line, obviously they're paying.
Who's it?
Fred.
What, who is Fred?
Fred's gotta reach by his own household. And obviously they're paying all the bills, they just have to hook up to the line and be another customer, I guess, so.
Next big market, what the hell is that?
Okay.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Recommendation is the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Post, so Kerry, okay, that brings us to other business. Anybody in the audience? I see, anything in the audience here?
Here.
Yeah.
Mr. Foreclock.
Yeah.
Wait, come and sit down.
Okay, you should come and sit down.
Well, been having problems with a new neighbor, I guess you'd wanna say that, on County Road 116.
What kind of problems?
Well, there is no, they're landlocked into their.
He's landlocked?
He's landlocked, yes.
Okay.
He's got point two-two acres and I own on two sides of it. Jeff Wickstrom owns on the south side of them. I own on north and west. And then the east side is Cooch County land.
Okay.
So they have been act, first of all, they said that they, they've been using the alley that's not even vacated. Is, Cheryl, does that sound about right?
There, there's a platted road there.
Yeah, is it?
In between their two parcels.
Yes.
Between?
My two parcels.
And, and, but between your parcels, but it's a platted road?
It is a platted road, but.
It has not been vacated?
Right.
Okay. So in theory, you can be using that.
He can be.
He can be.
Oof.
Well, if it's a platted road, it hasn't been vacated as a public.
So how would we have to vacate it? So he can't.
Well, you have to apply for vacation.
Okay, I'd like to do that.
I can tell you on that, you say the county has a parcel to the east-west?
E, uh, east. And that's, there's that little creek that's back there that he's been using all junk in. I mean, he, there's no city, I think that there's no water, there's no utilities back there, they're living back there. They're bringing all kinds of junk. I've actually have an order of protection on him, he, and it's just, he's, he's no good.
Well, you can get, you can, you can apply for vacation and as long as there's other access to the property, we, I guess we consider that.
Yeah.
Certainly can't vacate a road if there's property behind it, I mean, if he was to sell it or, or, you know, if he comes around accident. So, but, the county, if there's county road then, or county land, he may be able to seek permission. That probably be the only way we could vacate that piece between here or two parcels.
Uh huh.
And he had other access to that piece of property.
Okay.
I don't know the, the guy or the character or anything, but it's a private piece of land, right now there's access to it.
It's, it's not in his name, though.
Pardon me?
It's not in his name, it's in his father, who's deceased?
I guess it wouldn't matter whose name it is, it is, it, you know what I mean? If his dad works aboard, his dad might be dead or.
He is, but there's.
Then it might be in estates or this.
Yeah.
I'm just attorney, but I mean, there's, there's, there's access to a, a piece of property whose ever name it is.
Uh huh.
The only way I think we could legally cut that off without getting ourselves in trouble is that there's another form of access to it.
Uh huh.
And obviously there's county land there. The county's always been good, I, I don't know what kind of easement they could grant to enter that property.
Uh huh.
It's just vacated county land, timberland.
Timberland, yep, and he's already cut a trail through there. He's made a mess. I have to actually, I can't, he's cut down trees on my land, but I can't do anything until I pay to have it surveyed, per the.
Well, that's okay.
Yeah.
If you pay to have it surveyed, he's, he's trespass.
Uh huh.
You know, you'll be able to collect those damages or whatever.
Okay.
In small claims court. I'm not an attorney, but I know what that means.
Yeah.
If you trespass, you're gonna end up paying.
Yep.
As far as the county, as far as the county. We probably could call to somebody at the county, it would be Destry Hill, it's our guy, right? Destry is our, our.
And Adam McIntyre, approach.
Well, yeah, I have him. To see if the county would grant an easement through their property. If you spent land in county, you'd have to, you know, everybody cuts trails on county property, you know, excessive or something. But they should be getting a grant of an easement to get to that property. Then you could legally, you could legally apply for, I mean, you could apply for an easement for vacation. Isn't it twenty-five foot right away to the per.
I'm not, I can't remember exactly. It's, it's, I think it's not, I think it's actually a platted road.
Yeah, but there's no, it's just solid trees.
Yeah, and, yeah, you know, what condition it's in, but if it.
Yeah, and then also, he's, he's not supposed to be within twenty feet of my land with, is, with, unfortunately with his OFP.
What do you mean, twenty feet of your land?
Well, I, I had to get an OFP because he, he threatened me with a weapon.
Oh.
So, and then.
Well, that's, that's how we get a different.
Oh, he's, he's just a.
What's the name?
Mad eyes and C.
Mad eyes and C.
You Google that once, you'll find out what kind of guy he is.
I know something's not done, it's gonna be really bad on my issue. Cause me and Derek and Wickstrom have been out there doing the first night. Sheriff's not giving calls at ten o'clock, connecting neighbors, throwing chainsaw and dent rangers and, and then you go out there and just freaks out on you and it's just gonna be, it's gonna be a mess. And you haul up this garbage back there.
Absolutely.
It's gonna be a massive blank problem pretty soon. Trail over there.
And then the other question is, I didn't know you could live on a vacant piece of land. You, I didn't know you could live on a vacant piece of land with no sewer, no water, no anything. He's living back there with a pregnant girl. Oh, yeah. We don't have enough time tonight to go over everything.
He also got a fire down too. Always he dealt with his ways.
Right. It's different than if you're out squatting and you're on thirty-eight acres of Cooch County, but if you're in Rainier City proper, what is, I mean.
Yeah, we gotta have some kind of ordinances, I don't know what, you know, I don't wanna speak out of.
Uh huh, I'd just say something to look into.
Out of context here, cause I don't know our ordinance is good enough, but I know we condemned houses when they didn't have sewer and water. And we end up tearing it down on Highway fifty-three or Highway eleven here and stuff. I went over there and, and, so. Sanitation part of it, if they're actually living in, what are they living in? A tent?
Tent, lean-to, whatever they're building back there all the time. That's a mess. We can go on a field trip if you want to.
Well, this is the first I heard, but I've been gone for a couple of weeks, I know Cheryl briefing a little bit, so. It may, we probably have to see what kind of county ordinance or not, county, our ordinance, what we have or what we could apply. Obviously, if there's city, sewers, waters, things like that, if, you know, it must be something, something there to make it happenable.
And then, the other, the other thing is, you know, he runs a chainsaw in the middle of the night, generator, he, I mean, is there a quiet time in Rainier?
Ten o'clock?
No, it's not really, it doesn't say anything yet.
There's no quiet hours in Rainier, though?
Not, not with the specific hours, no.
Well, but we need to look at that then.
That would really be, that'd be nice.
In the public, there's these ordinance, it says, if, no, it doesn't, it says, if, it doesn't have a specific time. It says, if, if it's bothering the enjoyment of others or whatever the wording is, you know.
Can't leave your windows open.
Following some noise, you have a noise.
I mean, but some, but there's the criminal repercussions for it. So you're gonna slide down with a monetary fine, you know, I mean, so there's.
There's no enforcement.
There's simple enforcement.
Well, isn't the sheriff, isn't the sheriff supposed to enforce city ordinances? But the ordinance does not have a criminal aspect to it. It's not, but it's criminal. But we can write it as such, should we wish to, we can.
Yeah, there has to be a violation, some kind of order for something.
Okay.
Before the sheriff will get involved, there has to be a violation.
A criminal violation.
Right, now, we may be able to look at, you know, the sanitation aspect, that's how we were able to get that one done.
Uh huh. You know, he'll have a fire going again.
And again, as far as vacating that access, I mean, we've been pretty lenient on doing that for, but I know one thing, there has to be. We'd have to make sure that the county was willing to, for that piece of property, have some kind of access to it. Cause there's cart path laws, you know, things like that, that you can't stop people from entering their property. So, you know, we, we wanna vacate it, well, he said I have the right to do it. We, you know, we'd be wasting money on that one, I know that.
Well, you gotta do something, cause this guy is.
If there's another, another access, then we can vacate it.
Yep, yep.
But that, that, that's only part of the problem.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I, you know, I, like I said, I don't wanna speak out of, out of turn here or, because I've not, we've done this enough, but.
Okay. Here we go.
I just think I would like to approach it as a console, as if it was happening in our backyard. So I'm trying to, I'm taking this seriously and I'm listening and I have spoken to a lot of persons, so I am aware of the situation. So, again, the ordinance is, I'm very minimalistic, all these things that are.
Oh, yeah, that's one of them. Always interrupting.
Well, I'm really at a loss, I wanna help you, but I, I think the only thing we can do here is check and see what kind of legal boundaries there are.
Uh huh.
Nuisance Act, basically.
Yeah.
Nothing, I guess, worse than, I'm thinking of something, but.
Oh, yes.
We, we can do some more investigating and checking into what we can and can't do, that's about all we can do right now. I, I know there can be no vacation, oh, yeah, we haven't applied for one, so, but that's just, like I said, a piece of it. And we will maybe talk to see if the county would be willing to grant an easement. But that's all I can tell you right now. But, but that's all I can tell you right now, I, I just don't have enough information other than, you know, uh, some issues, uh, you know, for sanitation, things like that, we may have to...
Absolutely.
Do something. And we don't have our noise, I don't know what our...
Apparently not set in specific...
Well, maybe, maybe we have to start, you know, so that's something we may have to address.
Mm-hmm.
And then, if you think about it, usually until you have an issue, a lot of times, you know, address what, what are we talking about? Then you have to figure out something and figure out a solution, so, um, we probably have to put that on the agenda, look at that, review some of our ordinances and pass some, you know, either clarify them or, uh, you know, fine them anyway. So, we'll have to do that.
Yeah, it's not been pleasant.
Yeah. Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Absolutely, mom, do you want to bring it in anymore?
Well, I'm concerned with this, when they build a fire.
I'm sorry?
I said, I'm concerned now with the fire danger going to be high when they build a fire.
They have no water.
They have nothing to put that fire out of.
Is there a burn ban on?
There is a burn ban on, well, not, I think it's not campfires, but they don't even really recommend those because it's so dry.
Well, I think you, I, again, that's, that's another, now there, there may be, uh, I, I don't think there's any, I don't, with the county, you know, city, county, you're not allowed. I know I couldn't light a, burn a brush pile in my, in my fire pit at home because we were putting, burning some brush. So, you do have to pay attention, so, obviously open fire, I'd have to check the county right now, see if open fires are even allowed. I doubt if they are the way the weather is, so.
There's three fires going on now, are there, there's three fires?
Well, yeah, I'm sure there's a fire ban and I doubt if any open fire fires are allowed, so, that. Now, there's something you can actually do.
Mm-hmm.
But again, they come there and they'll just assess a fine for it. And that, then the county has the right, the sheriff or whoever would have the right to, you know, there's a violation in it. I don't know, Cheryl, maybe tomorrow you can check and see if there's a, uh, a fire ban on right now. And, and that, that we can do, that, that, that'd be simple enough. If there is, then obviously we can report it and, uh, then, then there's some action that can be taken without anything, so. And the rest we'll have, we'll have to review some of our ordinances.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it, so.
Yeah, I mean, again, if problems arise, we'll have to try to figure out what we can do because I hate to think there's, this could be an ongoing problem.
Oh, it's going to be an ongoing problem.
That's how their, uh, you know, rules are made and...
Yep.
Once one's problem starts, then you have to make some rules to address it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Have you got any on the Peter project or is there a plan to give it up here on that picture or did I miss one?
Uh, the Peter right now, the only thing to tell you, it's, uh, they will have an answer this week on some redesign, some rethink, they, they said they have an answer.
In progress right now.
So, it's in the process, uh, that's all I can tell you, if, if they have it. By next council meeting, which is next Tuesday, maybe we'll have some clarity in which direction we can, can...
Just so you know where it's at.
Okay. Your hands up?
Yeah, I got, I am, yeah.
Yeah?
You want to come and sit at the...
Yeah, I didn't plan on this at all.
What's that?
I didn't plan on this at all, but, um, Matthew was supposed to come concerning the property over there on, um...
Yeah, that's what we just...
Okay, well, all the papers are in here and Matthew was going to come tonight, but he couldn't make it. So, I was driving by and I knew the council meeting was, so I thought, well, I'll come.
What's your name?
Gene Eisense. I purchased the property for my son forty-eight years ago for Kenneth Eisense Junior.
I don't think there's an issue of ownership or anything else, it's just that, uh, if he's trying to live on that and, and if...
He's not living there, he's there, but he's not living there. He has another residence. But he's there, you know, working, cutting, and the reason he had a machete is because you cut trees down with machetes. You know, in Florida, banana trees and trees and twigs and bush. But anyway, that's beside the point, I didn't come here to talk about that.
Well, you know, the, the only thing that comes, obviously we have a neighbor here that if there's open fires or things like that, and there's a fire ban, we can...
Yeah, you have to come.
We'll see what kind of issues are going on there. We have some ordinances that we have to review and see if he's complying to the ordinances or if they need clarification or definition. And so that's all I can say about that, but same thing I told him.
Yeah.
And so if there's open violations, then, then there will be a report to the sheriff.
Right.
And, you know, if he adds, you know, uh, if there's open sewage, things like that.
But...
Obviously, then, then the sheriff's department would step in. But right now, as far as vacation and stuff like that, uh, we have to look at it.
Yeah, I, I understand all that. Um... The sheriff has, no, not the sheriff, the, um, judge has already okayed everything for him to be out there.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's a problem out there, it's just what he's doing while he's out there.
Right, right, I get it.
You know, if he's got, you know, if he's got trees on, obviously his property, that's a trespass issue and there has to be a survey to find that.
But we'll figure that.
That would be a civil action.
Okay, excuse me, I'm done.
Okay.
You can poke me with a fork.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, we, we'll do what we can on the check-in and see if any of these, um, there's some violations here and, and that. And I'll try to help you on it, but, uh...
No, we don't know what we can do.
Yeah. We don't know what we can do and I don't want to promise anything, you say we're going to do this and we don't have the right to do, and if there happens to be an ordinance defined again, we're willing to look at it and define it for everybody. Okay, any, anything else?
Where, what's next, uh, council meeting?
It's next Tuesday, same time.
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty. So, Cheryl, if you can check and see if there's a fire ban, also a few, two, some of the rules. If you can give us copy, maybe there may be some potential relief that we can do, uh, call the head or, or you can see if they do.
We're putting people...
Again, you know, right now there's an easement, but if he's, we could vacate that if necessary, but we could... Okay?
And, and the alley, we really don't know what it's at because there's no, it's, it hasn't been surveyed over there, so.
Well, Serrano probably can survey that.
Yeah, we need, we, I, I plan on doing that, I'm talking with, uh, we're, uh, yeah, I'm working with Serrano and there's another guy who's on the town, we'd like to get a price, because I got a price to do my land of two thousand dollars, which kind of stinks to spend when it was never a property before. And they moved in and now it's a problem. I think actually there, I mean personally, since they're the problem, why, why should I have to pay for my land to be surveyed? They're the one that should have to pay to be surveyed.
Some, some works to the way he's typically going with those surveys. Like people, like people just honor things for time, over time, and then someone comes in and it happens, unfortunate. But, I mean, he cut trees under property, I, I mean, I, I, that's one that I'd be willing to go to court over. You know, if he's, did indeed trespass and do those things to your property. So, I mean, it sucks to have to put money out that's all fine for, but, I mean, if it's going to be a long process, you want to honor yourself with all the information and possible things, so you know you're in right. You know, I mean, that's what I was thinking.
We'll look into it when we can, all right? I, I can't make any promises, but we'll, we'll look into it and see what we can and can't, okay? Any other motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody for coming.